For the recording. All right, thank you very much. And Ms. Wykoff, I do see that Mr. Lell is in the attendees list, so if we could bring him forward. And once he's for it, I'll just go ahead and get started. Okay, good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. The time right now is 7:01 PM. Ms. Wykoff, please call the roll.
As soon as I find my unmute button, yes. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Fisher, and Scarborough.
All right, thank you. And I'm scanning through the attendees list. I don't see Councilmember Gamble. I don't think that we had him as identified as being absent this evening. So when we see him come into the attendees room, we'll go ahead and announce for the record that has been brought in to the meeting. And so, good evening, everybody. Councilmember Foulter, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
United States of America. To the republic.
To what?
And.
We're just saying.
Nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
And justice.
Justice. Correct.
Thank you, councilmember. And before we move on, councilmembers, I'd like to acknowledge that since you can't see the, you may not have the attendees list up. But our county councilmember Sam Low from District Five is on, so good evening, councilmember Low. Everybody wave. There we go. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and this is under announcements and presentations. We have a proclamation here recognizing February as National Black History Month. Whereas founded on work done in, beginning in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson to bring attention to the need for acknowledging and accurately representing Black and African American history, Black United Students and Black educators at Kent State University used the foundation laid by Woodson to found Black History Month in 1970. And beginning in 1976, every president has declared the month of February as Black History Month. And whereas Black and African Americans have profoundly, have made profoundly significant contributions that have enriched America and the lives of every American. And every American should acknowledge and express thankfulness for these. And Black and African Americans have made and continue to make America a better place and Americans a better people. And throughout the arc of history to present day, Black and African Americans have experienced and endured the inhumanity of injustices and equities from societal and institutional biases, classism, racism, that are rooted in exploitive economic and political systems. And whereas it is a moral imperative that each of us learns about sheds light upon and condemn condemns the inhumanity of injustices and equities that Black and African Americans continue to experience and endure, but more over that each of us takes action to realize true reforms. And whereas on June 9th, 2020, every Monroe City council member and I signed a joint statement of Mayor Jeffrey Thomas and the Monroe City Council condemning and standing against racism, discrimination, and hatred. And whereas to be silent in voice and complacent in action is to be complicit in this inhumanity and injustice. And now therefore I Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the City of Monroe, Washington, do hereby recognize February 2022 as National Black History Month. And I call upon each of us to listen to black voices to learn about experiences of Black and African Americans throughout history, but also today. To shed light upon and condemn the inhumanity of injustices and inequities that Black and African Americans experience and endure. To take ownership for each of our roles in perpetuating these, to confront and end biases and racism. And to take action to realize true reforms in ourselves, our community, our culture, and our institutions to abolish injustice and inequities that Black and African Americans still experience and endure today. And with humility and love for one another, taking action for true reforms. May we join hands as united and diverse America and lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring, ring with harmonies of liberty for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that, excuse me, would be a public hearing. We're now under item 5.1, ordinance number 003, 2022. Granting a five-year non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Astound Broadband LLC for free for first reading with Mr. Heebner. Mr. Heebner. Good evening, Mr. Heebner. You are now in the panel. And Ms. Minor, you are also in the panel. Ms. Minor is from Ogden Murphy and Wallace, and Mr. Heebner will be introducing her momentarily. Go ahead, Mr. Heebner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, sir. Good evening, councilmembers, and good evening to Councilmember Low in the audience this evening. Oh, councilmembers, as the mayor just mentioned, in front of you this evening, you have a proposed telecommunications franchise agreement for Astound Communications. This is, this will be a new franchise granted to a previous awardee. Guys here with the city of Monroe. The procedural history of that previous agreement is in your agenda bill. Quick summary this evening, it was adopted previously by ordinance 001, 2011, granting a 10-year cable franchise to BlackRock Cable. That franchise went through a few approvals of indirect control change over the years, as summarized in the agenda bill, and that that franchise previously expired earlier than last year. After approval by council last, later last year of a final and most recent change of indirect control, Astound Broadband, the subsidiary of the overall holding company requested a, an updated franchise agreement. As Mayor Thomas mentioned a moment ago, Emily Minor from our legal counsel Ogden Murphy Wallace is with us this evening and will provide further detail on the proposed franchise up for consideration for you all. Before I turn the floor over to her, I just want to take a moment to recognize Ms. Minor for the wonderful work that she has done in this area for us. This is the second franchise agreement that Ms. Minor has assisted the city with in approximately six months. So I just want to recognize her diligence and work for us in this area. With that said, I will turn the floor over to my classmates, Ms. Emily Minor from Ogden Murphy Wallace. Mr. Mayor, unless there are questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Heebner. Good evening, Ms. Minor. Go ahead.
Thank you, council, for having me this evening, and thank you, Mr. Heebner, for that wonderful introduction. It's my pleasure to serve the city, and I'm really happy to be here again in front of you this evening, presenting on the Astound franchise. Mr. Heebner gave us a really good overview of the legislative history. I'm just gonna run through some of the high points of the franchise itself. As mentioned earlier, this is for existing infrastructure. This is not for new infrastructure or, you know, not a new entity that's coming in and installing new infrastructure. This is already for existing. They may continue to build out, but it's not going to be a brand-new infrastructure coming into the city. It's for wireline services, so they're not going to be installing any small wireless facilities or macro towers or anything like that. It's just for wireline. It is a five-year franchise with an automatic, a five-year term within automatic five-year renewal, getting us up to 10 years. We are requiring the regular right-of-way permitting requirement, so they have to come in and get a right-of-way permit when they're doing work in the right-of-way. We have insurance and indemnification provisions that are WCIA-approved. We have restoration requirements, so when they're done working, they need to restore the right-of-way to the condition that it was before or better. We also have the typical bonding requirements to make sure that if they don't do the work, then we can come in and do the work and be reimbursed for that. They are subject to utility taxes, but no franchise fees under state laws. I mentioned in the agenda bill itself. They are considered a telephone provider, so under C.L.A., we're not allowed to charge them franchise fees, but we do subject them to the utility taxes. And again, because we can't, we can't get franchise fees, we can seek reimbursement for administrative costs related to the negotiation of the franchise up to $5,000. So we will be requesting that. This has been reviewed by city staff as well as our legal office, and so we are recommending moving it to a second hearing and approval at the next regularly scheduled meeting. With that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. Councilmembers, before we move to open up the public hearing, does anybody have any questions for clarification from either Ms. Minor or Mr. Heebner? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to open up the public hearing. For those of you who are interested in speaking on this proposed ordinance, please go ahead and raise your hand. You can raise your hand in the Zoom app at the middle bottom of your screen, or you can hit star nine if you're on the phone. So please go ahead and raise your hand now if you'd like to speak to this ordinance that's proposed. All right, one more, one more call. Please go ahead and raise your virtual hand in Zoom or hit star nine if you'd like to speak on this proposed ordinance. All right, seeing none, I'll move to council. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
I move to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing.
Can he second?
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Kenny to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye. Yes.
Abstentions. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, everybody. I then turn to council. Is there any further questions? Are there any further questions or a motion to close the public hearing? Councilmember Scarborough?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
And for seconds.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Hanford to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next motion for council's consideration. Is there a motion? Or any questions for staff? Go ahead, councilmember Foulter.
I move to accept as first reading ordinance number 003, 2022, granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Astound Broadband for a period of five years and forward to the February 8th, 2022 business meeting for a second reading.
I have a second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Davis for the requested action number three in this proposed, in this agenda bill. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the, and thank you, Ms. Minor and Mr. Heebner for the presentation and all your work on this. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item. That item would be item number six, public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the audience to speak to members of the public, to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi-judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded each speaker. So anybody that would like to speak to the city council on any other items this evening, if so, please go ahead and raise your hand or hit star nine. Okay, one more call. If you're in the Zoom app and would like to speak to the council this evening, please hit your raise hand function in Zoom or hit star nine on your phone. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be item number seven, final action, 7.1, final action ordinance number 002, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Monroe, adopting the Monroe Woodlands annexation with Ms. Marrero. Good evening, Ms. Marrero. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm bringing forth tonight the final action for the Monroe Woodlands annexation. Just to give you a quick recap, the public hearing was held at the January 11th city council meeting. Public testimony was received, and we had two public comments. Those public comments were regarding the school districts and the no protest agreement for the Monroe Woodlands Development. Staff answered those questions, and the city council closed the public hearing and accepted as first reading ordinance number 002/2022. The annexation area encompasses approximately 178.19 acres and is generally located west of 175th Avenue Southeast and immediately north of the future US2 right-of-way. The annexation area is contiguous with the Foothills neighborhood located immediately to the south. And immediately to the east is the Robin Hood neighborhood. The requested action is before you on the screen, and if the city council approves the ordinance tonight, the annexation will become effective five days from and after its passage and approval and publication, which at the earliest would be February 2nd. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marrero. Are there any questions for Ms. Marrero or a motion? Any questions or a motion? Councilmember Hanford, thank you. Go ahead.
I'll take the long one. I move to approve ordinance number 002, 2022, annexing, annexing the property commonly known as the Monroe Woodlands annexation area. Acknowledging and requiring that the annexation area shall be designated R7, residential seven dwelling units per acre on the city zoning map, and medium density SFR on the comprehensive plan future land use map. Requiring that the properties in the annexation area be assessed and taxed at the same rate and on the same basis as other property within the city of Monroe. Adopting supportive findings providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Second, culture.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second for, from Councilmember Foulter for the requested action in this agenda bill. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Marrero.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be item eight. This is a consent agenda. And before we move on to the consent agenda, we do show that Councilmember Gamble is in the audience. We're gonna bring him forward. Please let the record show that Councilmember Gamble joined us at 7:17 this evening. Councilmember Gamble, we are working on promoting you to, there we go. Good evening, Councilmember Gamble. Just confirming you are in the panel now.
Is there anybody else in the, in the audience? I've been trying for 15 minutes to get in, so I had to do it through the direct link. It wouldn't go through the agenda packet.
Okay, you are, you are the only person that we were waiting for. So, not that we were waiting for, but you were the, the only other councilmember that we expected to join us.
I understand that. Is there anybody in the audience that my concern is, could citizens be able to listen to the meeting if they can't access it via the packet?
I'll go ahead and defer to Ms. Wykoff.
I, I see a couple names I don't recognize, but that, I don't know that that means that they got to the link through the agenda packet.
Councilmember Gamble, can you, can you explain how you came into the meeting again?
I used it from my, I'm using it off of my phone via the link that was in my calendar. But I could not do it via my PC, just going through the normal, the agenda packet. I always try to do that to make sure that that works. So I don't know if it's my, on my side or not, but I thought I would ask the question to make sure that we're not.
Understood. Let me go ahead and recognize Ms. Knight. Ms. Knight, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, Mr. Mayor, I would be happy to go out and test it if that would be helpful.
Okay, so we, rather than go into recess, we are going to suspend moving on with the consent agenda. Ms. Knight, please go ahead and, and try that. Let's make certain that the link is working in the published agenda. Thank you. Councilmember Foulter, did you have your hand up for consent then?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm waiting.
Understood.
Mayor, I just received a word from someone that they did try the link on the agenda, and it does appear to be expired. I thought I had the most current link on there. So I don't know what to do from here.
Okay, I will, we'll hold on just a second. Thank you.
And Mr. Heebner did let us know that he can update it live so that it will be updated. I'll defer to the attorney on procedures.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm gonna hold until Ms. Knight is back in the panel.
Okay.
Mr. Lell, a question will be coming your way. I'm sure you'll be looking into that momentarily. Ms. Wykoff, was the, not that it matters, but I'm curious, was it a member of the public or was it a staff member that tried to come in through the agenda that let you know?
Staff member, yeah.
Thank you. Deborah's working on sending us a message, I believe. One moment, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Ms., Ms. Wykoff, could we put ourselves in recess for five minutes so that I can confer with Mr. Lell and Ms. Knight and then come back to the body of the council?
Yeah, I'll make a note that we're in recess for five minutes at 7:21 PM.
Let's do this. Let's say that we are in recess for nine minutes, just to make it an easy number for folks that are listening. We will reconvene at 7:30. And so councilmembers, you can stay here. I'd recommend that you go ahead and put your microphones on mute for right now, and then I'm gonna confer with Mr. Lell and staff, and then we'll be back by 7:30. Thank you. All right, the time right now is 7:30. I see that Councilmember Gamble's in the attendees list, so we'll bring him back forward. We can go ahead and move Ms. Marrero back to the attendees list. Councilmember Foulter, we won't be taking action, so just FYI. All right, let's make sure that we've got all councilmembers, and let's wait for Ms. Knight to come in. All right, let's make certain we've got all council members and uh, let's wait for Ms. Knight to come in. Councilmember Gamble?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, um, so because there was an issue with the link in one of the agendas that went out. Uh, we are going to be taking those items that are on tonight's agenda, uh, including those items that uh. Council voted on this evening, and we will be moving those to a future agenda. Uh, so uh, we don't see a need for a special meeting to um, to resolve anything this week. And so uh, those items where council took action this evening, uh, those will be coming back to council for consideration for action. At a, at a future meeting, uh, as maybe necessary, uh, staff will go ahead and issue whatever notices are necessary uh, to ensure that. The public that would like to comment on different things, um, including those items that we had ordinances on, I'm sorry, um. Uh, those items we had public hearings on this evening will be able to to come forward and vote, so. I'm sorry about that, everybody. Does anyone uh, gonna turn to Ms. Knight and Mr. Well? Do you have anything to add to what I've just said?
Mr. Well, if you're from my end, Mr. Mayor, um, my, my only comment is, I, I think uh, you alluded to. If there is something that is ultimately determined to be time sensitive, the council can always in its discretion hold a, a short special meeting at some point. Um, between now and your next regular meeting in order to address those issues.
Okay, Ms. Knight, do you have anything further?
Don't, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, and then council members, do you have any, any concerns or questions, uh, just to, just to be very plain in the English, I'm using the votes you've taken this evening. Um, those are not, we're not gonna consider those as final votes. We'll bring those back for uh, council's consideration at an upcoming meeting and uh. Uh, there's, there's nothing that, from right now that would require a special meeting to our knowledge and. Uh, staff will just confirm that, and for the new council members, a special meeting requires twenty-four hour notice, and we would be coordinating with you before doing something like that to make certain we have a quorum. Um, I'm not certain that we've had a special meeting in the last eight years I've been doing this, so. Um, I will, uh, we'll contact you if we find that we need to do that. Any questions from council members? Okay, any other follow-up from Mr. Well or Ms. Knight? All right, um, so um, since you can't take action, I'm just gonna, going to announce that the meeting is adjourned for this evening, and thank you very much, everybody. And again, my apologies uh, for the um, uh, for needing to do this, uh, so thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, Jason.